Roll call please.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Sheever?
Yes.
Mr. Murrah?
Yes.
And Mrs. Stone?
Yes.
We have a motion to approve the treasurer's financial report dated July 30, 2013. We have as far as this evening.
Yeah, I highlighted in my notes a point or two that I thought was kind of interesting. Trying to tie everything that comes out of our office to the five-year-old past. Obviously, we need to place a tremendous amount of emphasis on those reports. And the SM2 does a great job of doing that, of breaking down and showing how we're running on today. And then also here today, with this year today as well. So we'll let you see how we're tracking based on updates that made in May and then in October. I think it will be beneficial if trends that develop are areas of concern. Hopefully, it will allow us to identify those trends in advance of becoming an avalanche of negative financial information. So it will pinpoint trends that will let us take a look at how fiscal operations are moving compared to our broad five-year forecast for the fiscal year. That's probably the most pertinent thing this evening, the financial report. Couple of updates on ongoing projects. Solar projects still moving forward. We're kind of in red tape over the AP and solar plant sizing, engineering, et cetera. We're very much still in green light moving forward. Second piece, Mr. Crowe has been working hard with Carrier and Standard Plumbing to get the chillers up and functioning. We've started school. One really implemented tomorrow. We're looking through with half tonight. So we've made progress. Hopefully, by door open Monday, it's nice and cold.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? Brian? Roll call please.
Mr. Sheever?
Yes.
Mr. Murrah?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Stone?
Yes.
Here we do have an addendum C named. Everybody see that?
There's one correction on that.
Okay.
The first item where it says replace section nine, I see a problem. Resolution had item B, it should be E instead of B.
Mr. Murrah?
Yes.
Mr. Sheever?
Yes.
Yes. Mrs. Stone?
Yes.
Any reports? Here's um, Mr. Sheever, athletics.
Yeah, the runner short, same uh, quarter off the running. All the courses uh, and I have that couple of programs. Can't take credit for the training days. Bring these along for the work this evening. Thirteen full sports schedule. And also, the trip is unfortunately. A gold card to trade for sale. It's very easy to buy. Tell you how he just bought on the CD for Paul. So ten dollars, um, a lot of benefits for local merchants that take advantage of those. We had a little conversation about that in hotel and so on. The athletic complex is coming along. A lot of work's been done in the last couple of weeks, um, since our special meeting. The light poles are up. The visitor bleachers have been set. The most of the fencing is up around the corner. Right now, a lot of the asphalt is being taken up. Almost a wonder it's all up except for the war. A couple areas there that will face in. Soon we'll have Blacktop in to finish things up and we should be good to go by the first of the whole of walking. So a lot of Kudo and Jake were probably keeping a whip on the people out there, obviously, and so.
Will they, will they be ready for next since it's Saturday? But Jake?
There's actually, there's actually two junior high games on Tuesday.
That's right.
So Jake and I talked, we're going to line the game field probably Tuesday afternoon. They're going to have the games Tuesday night. Asphalt is supposed to begin Monday. Worst case scenario, we'll run everybody in and they'll sit and use the visitor bleachers both home and away. Because the steps are not completed on the home side. In fact, we'll have to use a step ladder to get somebody into the bleachers to get up to the press box or in the clock. But it's no safety issue with regards to the visitors and home side, sitting on the visitor's bleachers. And the stone will be packed out and possibly even the first layer of asphalt may be down for Tuesday night's game. So we're going to be okay. That Saturday then, that Saturday then is the first JV game and we'll make do that day. But the point, the game that we're pointing to is that September 6th. Trying to have all the asphalt done, all the steps done, all the fencing done for that games.
It does look good.
They're actually going to turn the lights on tonight, so the first time.
And I could, before I, I'd be risk, I did remember to want to thank the board. We're making personal contribution, all of this collectively. We're a whole sponsor at our six annual SARS office, a lot of 156 fall invitation, which took place a couple of weeks ago. And SARS fall course. And SARS actually, there was 12 teams that we did. SARS finished. Thank you again for helping to sponsor. But now.
Are you done?
I'm done.
We had a pioneer forum meeting this week and it was business as usual this time of year for pioneer. It's a pretty short meeting, I believe. I think school started today for them.
Juniors were, yeah, thirty-two of our juniors went over today for their first day. And all of them bus. Tomorrow, we're expecting twenty-six more seniors for a total of what, fifty-eight students?
Student achievement, Dr. Johnson?
Well, for the last couple of weeks, you log into OGE, the first banner across their website is coming today. State report card. I guess it's there, but every time I log in today, couldn't.
I haven't. The, I printed off just the Crawford County Schools and our particular school, there's a hundred and four data points. And so what was supposed to be a clear and more concise local report card is a hundred and four data points. So I'll pass, I'll pass that around for you to take a snapshot of. I'm sure you can interpret all twenty pages of those, of those numbers, letters and percentages.
You want to get it through that language?
Yes. I mistakenly printed.
Mistake?
I ran through a relet paper. So I reran it just Crawford County. And you know, there's, all kidding aside, there is information in there that we can take from to know what areas would need to address to get better on. But if it's for the purpose of better understanding of the level of, I don't think it accomplishes it.
Well, even though I couldn't access the data, I know it's night at about five o'clock. Who else can get it? So it was already done on the, but it's still like pointing out the relationship that we're all aware of between poverty and achievement and this report card. Clearly, probably uh, this is a big data. Surprise, but I'm amazed with legislators towards this.
Mr. Henderson, I've been, been born through the data and the one that I think reached the most value on is what's called a value-added report, which really speaks to where the kids come in, where they leave, how much value you added to that student's education throughout the course of the year. And that's what we're constantly doing with our staff is, as opposed to efficiency, we've reached growth. And so the expectation is that you grow those kids at least a year. And from all the information that we're looking at, by our growth measures, while we have a couple of areas that we've got to get better at, we are growing our students. We're doing the best growth of our students compared to the rest of the world, which is our largest segment. Lowest twenty percent, we're actually in any of those students. For the most price that we're on the most of our seeds, which isn't where we want to be. So there's areas that we can get better at, but this is a difficult report. What just happened in print here maybe an hour ago was able to put in a format that would be presentable tonight.
So I went on a desk where I would get.
Yeah. It's a spreadsheet and it scrolls across twenty pages to the right. And then it's power of many school districts out there, so.
Is, you know, in like Excel?
It's in Excel, you can, yes, reenter. Yeah. And I actually deleted any field that I was, like those I do, like the head school address. I deleted probably twenty fields, but there's still a hundred and four fields on that report.
Well, obviously, school starts on Monday, so we'll be back up in the, with the breakfast in the backpack program. I think everybody saw an email go around about Lori asking if we'd be interested in helping with some, some afternoon. But I think we should do that. It takes about a half hour, obviously, schedules permitting, but half hour forty-five minutes on Thursday. And we're going to get the Association's group, football players to, to help some other weeks of, or multiple weeks. There is a signup sheet on the, to the front counter at the board office that Rob and Shire was providing. So if there's groups that want to sign up, that would be more than welcome to come and sign up.
What time does it start?
I think they want to start packing at three, three fifteen. So it's about half hour, so.
Every Thursday at three?
Could you go ahead and put our office on there?
I did not put it because you'd said every day there. So you know, if you want to pick.
On Thursday, I meant Thursday. Somebody would be there every Thursday.
Yeah, and I didn't know if you wanted to commit to every single Thursday.
Yeah, they will. Some definitely.
I'll make sure that I get that in.
Superintendent's report.
The president's still members of the board at your desk and I, I gave you a flyer for the educational options program. This is just a quick brochure that we're able to easily hand to parents or students that are interested in non-traditional education. There's also a letter that was sent with the flyer to our students that are currently attending digital school. We have about ninety-two students right now who all live in community schools, residential school. And we're targeting right now our sixth through twelfth grade students, which is about eighty percent of our students that we lose to community school. I will tell you this week, and I know maybe Mr. Dennison can chime in, I know, and talk to Mr. Foreman today. Just this week, the three days, we had, there was five families that were coming into withdrawal to, to community school. And all five of them, after talking with Kevin, decided to stay in our school district. And so while that doesn't point to getting kids back yet, because this is just being mailed now, it does point that we've already saved five kids from going that route, which we know that will be as successful not having the support doing the homeschool online. So today, you'll get opportunity to see the educational options classroom. And I think you'll be excited. And I know we're excited about the opportunities that, that, that program presents for not only credit recovery, but credit attainment and credit advancement, so.
When the board comes over, see you in the classroom. I'll be there if we have any answer, any questions at that time. See, right now, we have approximately twenty-two students right now that will be taking some type of course. Once again, I get to be answered more questions at that time. There's no question right now. Every day I did there, Mr. Henderson, students that, parents are calling, they're there. It was, it was really impressive to, and talking to him. We should have saw a walk down and had students with, and people, and working with the pioneer. Listen to how they process. I mean, it's, it's very positive. Count on some lessons. We'll see. Traditional constitution is, is over the higher years. There's one.
While we would like to think that all of our kids fit and would be successful with a traditional classroom inside the case, we're going to add even more so as much choice that's out there we need to, to change in order to, to be able to be flexible enough to offer those choices for students. We went to buy a vehicle five, three years ago. We had a couple of certain colors you could pick from and maybe a couple of options. If you look at today, the number of options that people have, it's not just, I know when I could just replace my vehicle, I knew what I wanted before I walked the, the children. You know, I knew exactly the model, within the model, the level, the options, the type of engine, the color of interior, the type of radio, the type of navigation, if there was one, you know. So, you know, why is it in education, do we say, okay, you know, this is what we offer, take it or leave it? Hoping that we're changing the way we do business to be more customer friendly, be able to offer options for students and programs that fit their needs. We're excited.
Henry Ford said that, oh, he was available in any color you wanted, as long as it was, but come along. The students are our customers. They have to listen to their parents, how they want to be educated. People need some of our options.
So this has to be anyways, this is all of it. Our, our resident students who are currently enrolled in the community school, it's being mailed to their house. It'll be followed up with phone calls to those families if they don't respond and then potentially home visits. So we've got a, a layer of communication to try to, and the big thing is, yes, we want to attract those kids back more importantly. We want to stop, we want to stop the snowball event. And we already can see within just a few days that that snowball has stopped. And it, education's the key and part of Kevin's message tomorrow to the general staff meeting, two hundred and fourteen SARS employees that will be at our general staff meeting is to make sure that they're aware. Because you never know when it may be the custodian or the secretary or a teacher that hears a kid talking about leaving the district because things aren't working out for them. Here's, here's something that we can handle and say, let's give this a try first and still be able to earn a SARS diploma, still be allowed to be part of extracurricular activities. You know, and, and one thing that I wanted to clarify from our work session with the changes of the OHSA rules, those students that are in a community school are not eligible to play athletics in school. It's homeschool kids only. The difference between homeschool and community schools, homeschool is students that apply through the district to provide their own curriculum to their kids and they teach in the home through a prescribed curriculum, not, not withdrawn to a community school. Those kids are allowed to be part of athletics, but not the community school kids. So when you look down through some of the options here or some of the benefits on the first flyer, SARS high school diploma, community counseling, food service, the support and being able to be involved in clubs, activities, athletics, go to dance, go to prom. All these things are still afforded to these people that are under our umbrella of educational options as opposed to going to a digital school.
So if you're a student enrolled in track, you can't come to SARS and participate?
That is correct.
Okay, we'll go ahead and have the personnel certified staff items.
President's still members of the board, it's my recommendation to board approve items A through E, which includes the replacement item C from the addendum and the additional item E under the personal classified staff section.
We have a motion to accept the personal certified staff items. Any questions?
Mr. Murrah?
Yes.
Mr. Sheever?
Yes.
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 Personal classified staff items.
President's still members of the board, I recommend items A through C to be approved under the personal classified staff section.
Personal classified staff items.
Support.
Any questions? Roll call please.
Yes. Mr. Murrah?
Yes.
Mr. Sheever?
Yes.
Mrs. Stone? Yes.
Business items.
President's still, it's my recommendation that you approve items A through Y, which include the item I from the addendum, this is section.
We have a motion to accept the business items A.
I would like to point out that the North Central State College agreement is of no cost to the school district. Their president over at North Central State College, I've been working on a dual enrollment subcommittee for the college. And the president that they have now, Dr. Dible, he is very eager to expand students getting college credit, high school, and stepped up to the plate and is doing that at no cost to the school district. So whereas before, dual enrollment would pay a small fee per credit for a kid, we can offer this now at no cost to our students or to our district. And the key is, I'm really pushing them, one of the hurdles that we've had with dual enrollment is having a teacher who fits the criteria to teach college credit, you have to have a master's within the content area. Now, we're fortunate because we had this hire just a math and associate's teacher, who now both have a masters in the content area. And, and science, the retired hire, Pat Hargis, he has been, has some credentials also to do that. So looking at next year, we're hoping to offer several courses within our, our building. But more importantly, what I'm pushing this group to do is say, maybe we don't have the English teacher that has a masters in, in English language arts, but maybe another school district in our area does have it. Why can't we, with today's technology, offer our students that opportunity and use the teacher of record at another, other school districts as an example? So I really want more Central State College to step up and, and help, or pave the way for that to happen. So we're really pushing that direction.
Roll call please.
Mr. Sheever?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Stone?
State.
Yes.
Okay, so we have one discussion item.
In front of me tonight off the addendum is the recommended preschool handbook for your discussion tonight. I will tell you that Meyer changes, Paul Isom replaces the preschool director. There's date changes, a few updates, there's been no charge, no change in fees from what we've had in the past. I would recommend, if you don't have any questions, I know it's just in front of me tonight for the first time. But preschool start next week. If you, if I can answer any questions tonight, maybe it could possibly entertain.
So there's no, it's supposedly just dates and?
It's just dates and some churn up some language, but there was no policy change. Now, Paul's a limited schedule. He's already worked in one day a week as our, our, our part-time school site. We've increased his days to add a couple of days per month to help oversee the regulation, rules and regulations of preschool. Keep us in compliance, making sure that he files necessary reports with the state. The day-to-day operations will fall under Mr. World's responsibility as building principal, but Paul will be here and his primary school site responsibility is preschool. And so it fits naturally into that, so. But that means there's people out here.
Roll call please.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Murrah?
Yes.
Mr. Sheever?
Yes.
Mrs. Stone?
Yes.
I don't know if we have any communications or announcements this evening.
Just like the non-stand schools, invite everybody to that on Monday, September ninth at seven P M. And that's the same evening of the, that's the secondary open house that evening. I know that the elementary school over the next couple of weeks, we have an orientation September third. We have a district-wide waiver day next Friday. For, for the purpose of professional involvement. And we just finalized the intent on that. Mr. Anderson's been working hard, much on that.
Do you have any orientations to add to the athletic hours?
Actually, we had a conference at SARS Elementary School last week, seven to five. And I'll say, we put out the information, I, my parents were, students were being ordered to do it. But all students were welcome to come back and just give updates for the classroom. And the S37 was seven to five. And that's where it was, it was more specific time of course. And now the orientations will be approximately twenty minutes presentations by grade numbers. And auditory with everybody there saying, okay, this is very great, this is what you do. They're able to break out and go through everything, child's class.
We also had a good turnout at the secondary building, sixth grade orientation, sixty-five families represented at that orientation. So the Tuesday arrivals.
I noticed in the paper that Crawford has a freshman orientation. Do we do anything like that for the freshmen?
They actually did a stagger start. They brought freshmen in the first day that everybody's supposed to be in session and brought sophomore seniors the next day. So they did one day of school with just freshmen. We used to do a freshman orientation when it was a nine through twelve building, but these freshmen right now have already been in the building, in sixth graders, seventh graders, eighth graders. So this is, you know, their fourth year in the building. Their primary purpose for the orientations is to make sure that they know as far as where to go in the morning, how they're going to eat breakfast and how the schedule will run, where their lockers are at, where the classrooms are at. They don't get opportunity to meet the teachers. The meet the teachers will be on the heels of the house tonight that will be coming up on September ninth. To answer your question, no, we don't put freshmen.
To answer your question, no, we don't do freshman cases.
Do we have a motion to accept?
So, look.
Hold call please.
Dr. Murrah?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Sheever?
Yes.
Yes.